Welcome, everybody. Did you all think we were actually city council? You know, we're just planning and transportation. Welcome. We're all glad to see new faces and new people involved in this process. Speaking of the process, I just want to explain where we are tonight and what will come down the path, so you'll know what this process looks like. So this is a study session with LACI and Planning and Transportation Commission. So what we're talking about tonight hasn't been formally submitted yet. So this is a concept. We're giving feedback. You're giving feedback. And with that information, LACI and gang, by gang, I mean architects and developers, very fine upstanding folks, will take the ideas, finalize the submission, and that will then become the official submission. That comes, well, and it comes back to Planning and Transportation Commission. You all get a chance to speak at the public hearings. If PTC ever finishes with it, it then goes on to City Council, and the same thing, again, you have a chance to speak at public hearings. So knowing that, and seeing how many speakers we have, we will get to public comment, but we're going to limit it to one minute. And if you want to be brief and say, "I sent a letter and I support this," or "I don't support this," you know, you don't have to repeat anything anyone else said, or repeat what you said in your letters, because we do have those. Anyway, I just wanted to give that little bit of context. So this is not your only time to speak. You'll have many other opportunities when the application is formally submitted. With that, I think Zach is going to open us up.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning and Transportation Commission. The item before you, this is a pre-application design review study session for a proposed office project that does include a public park plaza on a portion of Plaza 7 and the applicant's property. The intent of the meeting tonight is to provide preliminary design, architecture and site design feedback to help guide the design prior to a formal application submittal. I do want to note, in leading up to this meeting and after the publication of the staff report, we did receive 61 public comments. They have been posted to our website, and each of you have received those, both via email and on the dais tonight. I'm available if you have any questions. Otherwise, I'm going to turn it over to the applicant, and they will proceed forward and give an overview of what we're looking at tonight.
Questions for it? No, any questions for staff before applicant starts? All right. It's all yours.
Honorable Commissioners, thank you for having us again. I'm very pleased to see you all again. As you know, we are here today to discuss the pre-application of our proposal to build a Class A office space along First Street and to offer a community plaza that we would like to build in conjunction with the development, given the economics of scale that can be achieved by doing this at the same time. Since the last study session from January, we have given much consideration to your helpful feedback and solicited input from the community through a large number of events and talk and talking to over 400 residents to better understand their attitudes and wishes towards this project. Foremost on the list was your recommendation to acquire the remaining parcel on the block, which would allow us to place the primary parking entrance on Shasta Street, along with the ride-sharing drop-off, to ensure that the traffic impact on First Street will be limited. We have followed your advice and have done so. Furthermore, we have moved the plaza back from the street, sorry, we have moved the plaza back from the retailers along Plaza 7, so that they may keep the surface parking adjacent to their businesses. Given that this would reduce the size of the proposed plaza, we have constructed the building in such a way that we would like to offer 7,000 square feet of our private land to the public in order to extend the size of the park by one-third. During tonight's study session, we would appreciate your feedback on the building, design, parking options, and community benefits to achieve a three-story building. I will give a project overview and then ask Brad Jacobson from EHDD, the architect who designed the Packet Foundation building, to give more details on the architecture. As you know, LACI is a local developer that not only rents properties downtown, but also supports many businesses downtown that could otherwise not afford to stay in business, given the ever-increasing difficulties many retailers are currently experiencing. The owner, Anne Wachiski, is also a local resident who loves this town and who wants to see the town thrive while maintaining its village charm. We are proposing a Class A office building, as we believe that Los Altos would not only benefit from a high-end office space that would allow local residents to remain in Los Altos instead of having to work in Mountain View, or Palo Alto, or other locations, but it would also bring more feet to the street to support the local retailers and restaurants. We also want to build on the success of the Third Street Green by proposing a permanent community gathering space, by building a free public plaza downtown at no cost to the taxpayer, and extend this plaza by one-third by providing an easement onto our private land. A third story would further allow us to provide massive setbacks to extend the park along First Street. Building on the success of Helix, which LACI sponsored in the past, we are also in active discussions with the Exploratorium, who are here tonight to provide a permanent, yet often changing, interactive art-science exhibit along First Street for the public to enjoy and interact with. We also want to discuss with the city, as part of our exclusive negotiating agreement discussions, future maintenance and participation of the programming of more community events that would bring people of all generations together via concerts, bringing outside orchestras, movie nights, game days, and other activities. We heard the community loud and clear that we need to replace the parking that we displaced through the creation of the plaza. Not only are we proposing to do just that, but we would like to offer an increase of over 50% of new parking by creating 40 additional parking spaces. We will also build six additional parking spots for the proposed coffee shop on the park, making the total of new parking spaces 46. Last but least, we could engage the city as well on a possible partnership to create yet another 39 parking spaces for a total of 85 new spaces, which would constitute 127% increase over the existing parking we would replace. The office building itself will be parked to code, and we will build, we will provide 243 parking spots for the tenants. The community further requested that we should provide public restrooms on the plaza. We heard them, and we are offering those as well, including future maintenance. We also heard that the local community groups that desire a more high-end office meeting spa, we also heard that the local community groups that desire, that desire a more high-end office meeting space and are offering one that is 1,700 square foot in size. It will provide an indoor furnished meeting space with dedicated public entrance that can be reserved by the public. Lastly, we also want to participate in the beautification of the alley that runs behind the buildings on First Street, which we will show you later in the presentation. A modern Class A office building will bring more vibrancy downtown and increase retail sales by an estimated $1.25 million annually. It would keep Los Altos residents coming downtown and not going other places. It will attract more appealing shops and restaurants, in our view. We believe that not only a three-story option would allow us to provide all these benefits, as we could step back the building all along First Street and step back the third story as far as 40 feet from the curb, making it not visible as you walk along First Street. As you know, we hired the Packet Building architects, who are keenly aware of Los Altos' needs, and I would like to hand over to our lead architect, Brad Jacobson from EHDD, to show you a 3D rendering of the project, to give you a better impression of what we are actually proposing.
Good evening, Commissioners. We begin with a view looking north down First Street, towards the building from the crosswalk at Safeway. We walk toward the plaza with a view of the open space, the surface parking serving retailers adjacent to the plaza, and the building with the third floor set back from the face. We gave great consideration in the design to preserving the charm of Los Altos, and I want to highlight tonight some of these design features. So as we walk down First Street, you are going to experience how these deep setbacks create a welcoming environment that reinforces Los Altos' small-town charm. The inherently warm natural qualities of limestone and redwood, and the variation in the facade, interact with the planting to create a great pedestrian experience. The tall windows and large recesses enhance daylighting for the inside, but also create transparency for the passerby, to be able to see activities inside. Continuing down First Street, you can observe how the building is broken down into smaller components to reflect the scale of downtown. A rideshare drop-off location is provided at the corner, as shown. A canopy provides cover as you walk down First Street. We are now looking at the facade on Shasta Street. There are two garage entrances for the building. This location for the garage entry was enabled by buying the eighth lot, as Yannis talked about. And now we approach the newly greened alley that is shared with the residential neighbors. Now, the design pays great respect to these neighbors. What you see here is trees and landscape, and a sensitively-designed service entry right there. But what you don't see are all the trash enclosures, and the power poles, and surface parking lots that are currently defining the alley. All of that is now carefully concealed behind closed doors or underground. And now we approach the plaza from the alley side. As we do so, we see a musical performance on the community stage, reflecting the type of programmed events this space could host, and the way the building steps down all the way to one story on the plaza. Looking down now from the second-floor terraces, we can see the hills beyond, and the view of the plaza from above. And the way, we can appreciate how the flexible plaza will accommodate a wide range of people and experiences, and how it will contribute to the charm that makes Los Altos so beloved to its residents.
That's not Los Altos. Yes. Don't panic.
This is the site plan, showing how the building is broken down in scale, and the pedestrian experience is punctuated by some key spaces, like the café, the community meeting space, the entry lobby, garage entry. Each frontage is tuned to the varied conditions on each side. The building is pulled way back along the plaza, and the alley, and First Street, to enhance the public realm. I want to be clear that this setbacks, these are really afforded by stacking some of that building square footage up on that third floor. That's how we're able to provide that. The importance of this setback is evidenced in this before-and-after slide of the alley. On the right is what it looks like, actually, a few days ago this photo was taken, with the power poles, the trash enclosures, surface parking, and on the left is what could be. High-quality natural materials with integral finishes reflect a long-term commitment to this community. These are materials that communicate a commercial use, but with a palette that supports the character and charm of downtown. This design actively supports the downtown design plan and the overall goal of enhancing the pedestrian environment. Finally, our proposal is in compliance with all applicable city requirements and plans, with the exception of the 30-foot commercial height limit. We are seeking to increase the height using the existing code section referenced here, which allows such exceptions when the project results in public benefit. Thank you.
Okay.
If you indulge me for two more minutes?
All right, go for it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you, Brad. I would like to summarize again the benefits we are proposing to allow us to build a three-story building. However, before I do so, I want to stress that we do, that we have looked at a two-story option that would not require any of the listed benefits, but we do not believe that such a building is in the best interest of the community. A two-story building would eliminate a larger plaza and the generous setbacks along First Street. The alley, the Plaza 7, which we believe are key to create the village feel of a positive pedestrian experience. Therefore, we ask you to consider and recommend a three-story option in return for the following benefits. Full replacement parking plus over 50% of additional parking by adding 40 more spaces. Public access to 7,400 square feet of privately-held land. Maintenance of the public-accessible private land. Publicly-accessible and privately-maintained restrooms. Increased setbacks along First Street, the alley, and Plaza 7. Extension of the plaza along First Street, combined with a potential Exploratorium-interactive science walk. 1,700 square foot of publicly-accessible Class A meeting space for community groups. In regards to the public plaza, we have been very deliberate in separating the funding, creation, and approval of the proposed plaza, so it is independent from the private office, and it is therefore not listed as a community benefit. Whereas we could do so, we felt it would be inappropriate, as it would create a very difficult to impossible precedent for future developers that, that want to invest in the future of Los Altos. It is not a precondition of approval, but synergistic to move in parallel because of construction of the underground, of the underground parking. Quite frankly, it would not be financially feasible to build the plaza without the office, not to mention that the disruption would be twice as long by separating the two. We have also offered an option B, which we would, which would create an office space without creating a public plaza, but find it significantly less attractive, given that the community would greatly benefit from the combination of the office building and the park being constructed at the same time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the extra time.
All righty. So, right now, we'll just, if we have any clarifying questions, my fellow Commissioners for applicant? No? So, what we're going to do then is move into public comment. If you haven't given me a speaker card and you want to speak, then pass it on up, please. We're going to...
Madam Chair, can I ask a quick question for the applicant? I forgot to hit my button.
Oh, yes.
I just wanted to make sure that I understood the drawing, and that is that the building at the two-story level will be at 28 feet, and at the top of the third floor, it'll be at 41 feet.
It is 41 feet from First Street and 44 feet from the back alley, because there's a slope in the street.
Slopes, yes. Okay. And then, I have a question for staff. I don't know whether I ask that now or later.
Why don't we, if it's not a...
You've got to hit your button.
If it's not a clarifying question...
It is a question about the drawings, because I was concerned, or my question to staff is the, along First Street, the gutter or the area of landscape, is that their responsibility if we want to have it so that the water will flow out in, from the street into the ground? Or is that us, the city?
The, all land within the public right-of-way, it would be maintained by the city unless some sort of special easement agreement or encroachment permit was negotiated with the applicant. But right now, the bioswales and future ones that are anticipated, it would be city-maintained unless otherwise agreed as part of the project approval.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. So, with that, we're going to open public comment. I was going to divvy up the two extra minutes among all of you, but that's only about five seconds, so we're going to stick, we have 30-plus speaker cards here. We're going to stick with one minute per speaker. Again, you don't have to take your full minute, if you don't want. I'm going to start out with two speakers who are going to hit, who are from the Exploratorium, and they need to get back up to the city, so I'm going to start with those two. And then the rest of you will be in no particular order. So the first speaker will be Leah Smith, followed by Hashim Anderson, and I apologize in advance if I'm butchering anyone's names.
And Madam Chair, could the next speaker sit in the seat so that we can make this process?
Yeah, the next speaker...
And then make sure everybody has their cellphone off, so they're not being disturbed.
Indeed. And the first speaker after the Exploratorium speakers will be Rosalind Bordeaux. All right, so Leah.
If you don't mind, we, we're just going to jump in together. So I'm Leah, and this is Hashim.
Hi.
And we're from the Exploratorium. But we're here because we worked at Helix by Exploratorium, which was in Los Altos from November 2013 to November 2014.
And we were able to create a community-based science center that combined retail space that we had right on State Street with a small science center for the folks of here of Los Altos.
Yeah, and the First Street Green project aims to work with the community in the same way that we worked with the community, and so that's why they invited us to speak today.
And we were able to build relationships with members of the public, whether it was children, parents, families, school district. We brought everyone together and did a lot of listening when we met with everyone here, and presented a product that truly reflected the community here of Los Altos.
So we're still very early in our collaboration with LACI, but we're continuing to explore ways to work together and support spaces and programs that support inquiry-based, intergenerational learning experiences that are meaningful to the Los Altos community.
Great. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. All right. So Rosalind is going to be followed by Bart Nelson, who will be followed by Larry Barron. So Rosalind.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Rosalind Bordeaux, and I'm an enthusiastic supporter of the First Street Green project. I'm also a recent homeowner here in Los Altos. My husband and I just purchased our forever home about two blocks away from here, and I actually grew up about two miles from here, and so I have a 40-plus-year relationship with downtown Los Altos. I'm also, most of all, I'm a mom. I'm a stay-at-home mom who is trying to raise my three young kids to be good, thoughtful, respectful citizens in this community. And there's a troubling narrative that's been out there about this idea that somehow, if you support the First Street Green, you don't care about the character of downtown Los Altos. And I'm here to tell you, as a mother, that is literally the only thing that I care about when raising kids, is the character of downtown Los Altos. So I want to just submit that we all care about the character of downtown Los Altos, and that every single one of us wants to make this a better place and preserve that feeling. So this is an unparalleled opportunity for us. Here we have a developer who's going to come in and build this amazing public space, as well as this incredibly thoughtful public office space for all of us to enjoy. And I also would just like to say that she is also not motivated solely by profit. She is a person who is here for both.
Thank you, Rosalind. Okay, Bart, followed by Larry Barron, and then Kim Cranston.
Commissioners, I'm Bart Nelson, 301 Blue Oak Lane in Los Altos. Have been one of, a few that have been born and raised here, so really enjoyed seeing the evolution of Los Altos over more than 50, 60 years. I totally am impressed with how this project has been evolved. One way or another, we'd have 77,000 square feet or so, but the concept of how they're listening to the community has really impressed me. Why I'm supporting this is that the First Street problems that our community have observed are mitigated by the setbacks in this building. The potential parking problems that we all observe can be mitigated based on how the council wants to treat them. We could even put the white dot program underneath and free up many, 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 many parking places for surface parking for our residents. So I do support this, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Bart. Larry, followed by Kim Cranston, and then Gloria Geller.
Hi, Larry Barron, 1521 AWAL Court. I was on the Park and Recs Commission for 10 years. I'm no longer on that commission, but I want to speak a little bit about parks. In the 2012 Park Master Plan, which was approved by council, the number-one priority was a park in north Los Altos. LACI is willing to gift that park to the city. It's a community gathering space that can be programmed, as you saw, in many ways, and it gives people a reason to go downtown, hang out at the park. There's been a lot of talk about the underground parking. A couple of things I wanted to point out. The parking is going to be really attractive for parking underground. It's going to have light wells. It'll have 24-by-7 security cameras, ample turning. And 92% of the remaining parking downtown will be above grade.
Ooh. Excellent, Larry. Kim, followed by Gloria, followed by Gary Haddon.
Hi, Kim Cranston, Los Altos Hills. I grew up in Los Altos. My family's been involved in the community for over a century, and I really appreciate the proposals being put forward tonight. They're not perfect. I'm glad they're going through an iterative process to make them better. We've got to make sure through this process, we don't let the perfect prevent the good. And I particularly appreciate the additional parking that will replace much, some of the parking that was lost in the last several years. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Kim. Gloria, and followed by Gary, followed by Michelle Lee.
Gloria Geller. The Third Street Green was a huge success, as far as I'm concerned. I had my birthday party there. I think other people, other people will do similar activities, bringing people down, using it as a hangout, which we don't really have right now. And I agree with everything everyone else has said, and I sent you an email, too. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Gary, followed by Michelle Lee and Deb Hope.
Good evening. I'm Gary Haddon, Los Altos resident. I'm on the Environmental Commission, but I'm speaking for myself. So I like the look. It's, I think the look of the office building is great, generous setbacks, the landscaping, and a very nice contrast to the bulk of Safeway. The gathering place, I like that, too. I think this is going to be wildly popular. It's people-friendly, and to me, that people connection is really what defines the charm of Los Altos. You go downtown, and you bump into friends and neighbors. You see people, and you start talking. That's just, that's the charm of a small town. I would say, let's go a little further. Take the other half of Parking Plaza 7 and turn that into a park. Let's have the city step up and, and work with LACI and do that. Make it even a bigger and better project.
So I'm going to stipulate no cheering, jeering, or throwing of rotten vegetables, just for timing's sake. Thank you.
You just cost me five seconds.
I'll give it to you, Gary.
People complain that they're dangling a carrot to get something. Well, I mean, they sure are, a whole bunch of carrots, and I'm saying, let's grab them.
All right, Gary. Michelle Lee, followed by Deb Hope, and then Roberta Phillips.
Hi, I'm Michelle Lee. I live in Los Altos, and I'm here to reiterate my really strong support for this project. I sent in a letter. And a big focus for me is raising my family here, like many of you. And I've got teenagers, and they just don't want to stay in our town in their free time. They want to go other places. There's other places that have more amenities for them. And I really feel that this space is a great opportunity for our community to have more of a gathering space. I love it. And I also believe that we can keep the charm, we can keep the character of our town, and still be open to new ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Deb Hope, followed by Roberta, then, oh, I'm going to really mess this one up. Upaya Akiong.
Hi, I'm Deb Hope, a resident of Los Altos for most of my many years, born and raised, and dad still lives in the original house, some 60-some years. I am a beyond enthusiastic supporter of this park, and I was on the DVC. I will say that I don't find a third story to be of any consequence. I've noticed that human scale happens down at the human level, and when something is set back, it really isn't noticed. I will say that what has bothered me more than anything is what happened at First and Main. When I come into this town, and there is no setback, there is no community benefit on the corner, our gateway, actually, the gateway to our town is a parking ramp that goes down to the basement of First and Main, that they kind of covered up with a window. So this is an amazing opportunity. I, I'm speechless, that someone sees the value in this town as much as I do, and I'm so thankful. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Roberta, followed by Upaya, and Nancy Brumow.
Hi, I'm Roberta Phillips. I lived in Los Altos here for 26 years, and I do have some concerns. I did look at the plans with Zach Dahl, and something that was not mentioned, that there's an entrance to the parking garage off of the plaza, and so they're going to be using our land, which they say they're gifting to us, but it's our land, so they're going to give us a gift of something that we already own, and using our land underground to park for their building. And they're focusing a lot on the green space, but I really think we ought to be speaking about the building itself and going into some more details of what is happening with the building, because I think there's a lot of zoning issues and legal issues in relationship to aggregation of the property. And I know that people are really enthusiastic, but I really think that the PTC should really dig into all the implications that are happening and the design of the building, because that's really what we're talking about, is the design of the building, not the park.
Thank you, Roberta. Upaya, you can correct me, please. Nancy Brumow and Elizabeth Powell.
Thank you. My name is Upaya Akiong. You're not the first to get that wrong, so it's okay. Again, my name is Upaya Akiong. I'm the owner of Kuabadi Studios on First Street. I'm also the founder of Women Entrepreneurs of Los Altos, and I am in support of First Street Green. I'm literally across the street from this project, and I welcome it. I think it's a delight to have this project there. It's, you have these vacancies sitting there for years. It's, you have these vacancies sitting there for years, and I feel that is a disservice to the community. I see, you know, there's, there's so many vacancies, and it's time to occupy these spaces throughout downtown Los Altos. It's time to bring vibrancy and vitality to the small businesses, businesses, to the community. People talk about the charm. They don't want to lose the charm of Los Altos. I looked it up, and charm basically means the power or quality of giving delight or arousing admiration attracts attraction. And I feel like change is okay, and we still need to enhance that charm by adding new opportunities like First Street Green. Thank you.
All right. Nancy, followed by Elizabeth Powell, and then Duho Lee.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Los Altos can enhance and preserve its small-town charm by embracing this proposal, which includes deep setbacks, wider sidewalks for a better pedestrian experience, a third story which is virtually invisible to pedestrians from most of the sidewalk, a public plaza with a café for concerts, picnics, events, and community gatherings, an increase in public parking. It will bring more vitality to our businesses and our restaurants. It will provide a great place for everyone in the community to meet and enjoy. Not only that, because it combines eight parcels with large setbacks and an easement of 7,400 feet of their own private property, it will actually be giving back one to two parcels in open space, which is not only in keeping with Los Altos village feel, but also enhancing it. I also would like to add that I agree wholeheartedly with Gary Hedden, and I'd like to see the city seriously consider undergrounding the entire Parking Plaza 7 with a larger park or theater or library on top. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy. Elizabeth, followed by Duho, and then Mike Abrams.
I'm Elizabeth Powell. I'm a resident at 226 West Edith. Our back gate faces, we enter Shasta from the back gate. I'm very much for the development that's happened, the apartments, Safeway in the corner. Fabulous. Would I have a question? I'm here to really settle an argument with my husband.
Don't put us in the middle of that.
The parking lot, I like the idea of taking the whole parking lot. That was brought up twice by two different people. We walk each day. We have loved seeing Bumble Bumble and all the activity there. We have loved to see, seeing momentum. How many businesses have been displaced? I understand that all the properties are purchased at this point, so that's a no-brainer, I guess. But that, those are my questions I have. So do the whole parking lot, if you can.
I'm sorry, family counseling is not one of our requirements.
Okay, the parking lot might be.
Thank you. Thank you, Elizabeth. Duho, please correct me on that one. Mike Abrams and John Baer.
No, no, thank you so much. My name is Duho Lee. I'm a resident of Los Altos. I wrote a letter this morning for full support of this project. I think it's a fantastic opportunity, and I hope the city of Los Altos has the courage to see this project through. Being a practicing architect, I think the building, the concept design I've seen so far is outstanding. I think there are these, I know EHDD's work for some time. I followed their work for some time, and I think, again, the product that we're seeing here is fantastic. And, you know, anyone who's been to the Packard Building or have walked by there will understand the caliber and the quality of architecture that EHDD can produce. So, again, looking forward to great progress on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mike Abrams, John Baer, and then Mike McCarver.
Thank you. The Los Altos community benefit is estimated at $10 million upon completion. Let me put that gift in perspective with other contributions. The Los Altos Educational Foundation will raise 3.7 million this year for Los Altos students. The Los Altos School District parcel taxes from you and me raise 10.3 million a year. Rotary and Los Altos Cultural Association raised 350,000 for AutoGo visual equipment for the high schools and theaters. Last year, last weekend, we raised $7,200 for the talent show, which goes to Camp Diversity scholarships. This is a community that just keeps on giving. This project represents a $10 million gift to the community. If we choose to turn our backs on this offer, we will be sending a signal to our generous residents that we do not need nor want their generosity. We will be sending a signal to anyone who wants to work with us to build a new community center, a new library, new artworks, that we do not need or want their generosity. A true chilling effect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. John, Mike McCarver, and then Gary Anderson.
In general, I'm very supportive of this project, but as you know, a study session is not only to praise what's here, but to give the applicant guidance as to what could be improved. So in that spirit, I'd like to offer several comments. The impact of the second-floor balconies and the second and third-floor windows to the rear neighbors, I think, needs to be looked at in terms of line of sight to ensure privacy of those neighbors. The appearance of the massing on the First Street side, we've got 300 feet of building on the first and second floor, and the usual standard is to, on First Street, to break it up into 50-foot modules so that the massing doesn't appear as large. The impact of traffic and circulation caused by the increased number of cars who use First Street, as well as First and Main, First and Edith, and First and San Antonio intersections, you've got 250 cars that you're adding to the site, and ultimately, the question is not how you say no, but how you make sure that those cars are not creating an undue impact. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Mike McCarver, Gary Anderson, Bette Hutchins.
Thank you. I'm Mike McCarver. I've been a Los Altos resident for 22 years. I live on First Street as of the last two years, and I'm president of the HOA Board at 101 First Street. So our residents at 101 First Street moved there because, most of us did, because we were really impressed with what we envisioned was going to happen in Los Altos in terms of upgrading from the town it was 30 years ago that I remember to what it's becoming. So we're excited about that. We love the park idea, but we have some really, really serious concerns about the office building. And the number-one concern is about traffic. First Street is a narrow street. We have traffic problems already, and it's unsafe for our residents to exit our parking garage. We're going to have somebody T-bone there one day, because you can't see traffic coming in either direction, because cars park on each side of our garage. So we're really concerned about traffic. We're concerned about parking. We think people may want to park above ground rather than below ground like they do at Whole Foods. So we hope that you can find a way to do this beautiful project without adding to our already problem, a big problem of traffic.
Thank you. Gary Anderson, Bette, and King Lear.
My name is Gary Anderson. My wife and I have lived within walking distance of the downtown for 35 years, and for a period of six years, we owned a small business downtown. One of the things we tend to forget is that downtowns are not about retail, they're not about business. They, for 300 years, in villages and communities, they've been about social interaction. But our town works against a limitation. We use First Street, we use Main Street, we use State Street. We wind up competing between strollers and tables in restaurants. We really don't have the space that a village ought to have to center the community. This gives us that space, and we don't have to close a street down or close a parking lot down to get it. We'll have it 12 months of the year, and that's a pretty special thing. Thanks.
Thank you, Gary. So Bette or Betty, you can correct me, King Lear and Merchia. I never know how to pronounce his name.
Hi, I'm Bette Hutchins on San Juan Court. I'd like to focus on Lacy's gift of the active listening and its amazing response. It's this, it's the myriad of small details that add up for me. I've crossed paths with Lacy's representatives in multiple community-focused meetings. I've seen firsthand where they've responded to multiple requests with thoughtful generosity. Yes, they have a lot of money, and they're investing it in community building and being great neighbors. Lacy is going through what's likely the most transparent permit process ever undertaken here in Los Altos. From what I see, they're tirelessly dedicated to the community requests, and to me, that's love in action. So love back at you, Lacy.
All right, thank you. King Lear, Merchia, followed by Libby Lucas.
And I'm King Lear. I live on Second Street, and I'll be able to see the third story from my living room window. I love this project. I'm a wholehearted, enthusiastic supporter of everything they're proposing to do here. However, I do have two recommendations, and these are serious recommendations and complex. One, do not trigger the opt-out agreement with Safeway. And I believe there's a construction technique that you could use to do the surface parking on top of the garage within six months and not trigger that, if you plan that carefully with the applicant. Secondly, I do have concern with parking in that area with a lot of traffic. And one way to get around to that is, what I've been proposing for a long time, is put a parking structure or added parking in Parking Plaza 3 and get the San Antonio access instead of driving around downtown in the core. One way to do that here is to forget the third story underground parking and do parking and loofahs for about $4 million. Put that into the fund, which would eventually build that garage, and reduce the truckloads and the project length.
All right, thank you. Merchia, Libby Lucas, and then Maria Lonigan.
Hi, so my name is Merchia. I'm the owner of 4846, 4856 El Camino Real, and I just want to say that I fully support this project. I believe that having Lacy as a partner for the city of Los Altos, it's amazing. Many cities will be very jealous. I think that the product they delivered, it's outstanding. You will bring the vibrancy to the city, to the downtown, and just kind of reinvigorate the whole process and, you know, social networking, you know, people walking and having a park, and I think it's a huge public benefit, and I'm fully, fully support. Thank you.
Thank you. Libby, followed by Maria Lonigan, and then Abby Erns.
Hi, Libby Lucas. I'm a 50-year resident. I'm afraid I'm dead-set against this entire process, because basically, I think your circulation element has been going downhill very rapidly in the last few years. If you look at the Livingston and Blaney Traffic Study of the 1975 General Plan Update, I think you'll see what an important vital grid you had at that point. At the moment, on the other side of Main Street, First Street is 40 feet in width. On the east side, which is what you're talking about, it is 22 and 30 feet. Well, when I come out of the regular parking plaza, I have to go over the median line. What you're going to do when you have underground parking, I have no idea. At the moment, you have cyclists who have to pretend they're cars. There's no cycling element on the side of the road. And the last time I saw a large delivery truck, they were bailing out, going through the parking plaza, because they couldn't negotiate First Street. Well, I think you've got to think in terms of practical applications. You have your fire trucks, you've got your delivery UPS. I have to come to a full stop on most of those side streets now between Main Street and Edith. So I think you need to get functional and get an engineer to give you a proper review. Thank you.
Thank you, Libby. Maria Lonigan, Abby Erns, and then Andrea Eaton.
Hi, everyone. I'm Maria Murphy Lonigan. I live at 393 Hawthorne Avenue, about a half-mile from downtown. I'm here to wholeheartedly give my support for the three-story Lacy project tonight. This is just the kind of community solution that we need in Los Altos. It is indeed a gift that other towns would absolutely dream of. We have the lowest resident-to-parkland ratio in the county, or one of the lowest, and I really do believe this project will help. As a couple of other speakers have said before us, Lacy has done an amazing job in listening carefully to our residents. They're really a role model in doing that. And indeed, I also agree with Nancy Brumow and Gary Hedden, let's put the rest of that parking plaza to work with a potential new library that could include a new theater or a bigger park, and some additional community spaces to drive vitality downtown. My only question, could we potentially put Lacy and their incredibly talented team of planners and architects to work to re-envision other public spaces in Los Altos, like Hillview and Grant Park Community Centers? Thanks for your careful consideration of this project.
Thank you. Abby Erns, followed by Andrea, and then Jim Jolly.
I know you're waiting for me to say, "But it's not French."
And they know.
The real-world word tonight is "park." Are we talking about cars or people? So let me start with people. I've heard thrown around, why do we need another park? We've got the one at Edith, we've got the one across Foothill Expressway. We're not getting any use out of those parks, because what mom is toddling her kids across major intersections? And we all know that the one at San Antonio and Edith is a disaster. So let's talk about the other park, vehicles. The lifespan and the change in technology is doing a whole lot with the subject of vehicles. We need to be forward-thinking. This isn't next week or next month. As a matter of fact, as you look at all of this, and I'm sure you're considering the visioning process, it will take many years for the rest of downtown to change.
Thank you, Abby. Andrea, Jim Jolly, followed by Ramya Crona. Okay, you're third in line.
Number one, I love this project. There are a couple of things I want to mention. I really like the concept of the taller building with setbacks. Where I lived in Washington, DC, the precious historic buildings that was done frequently, and the setbacks would go up two, three, four floors for office. I think the green is just, you know, a gift from where? I don't know. It's a wonderful idea. And I hope that there'll be a way that the size can be enlarged, that you all could help develop that. And my last request is, our city has rather a bad reputation about how long it takes to develop things. So I urge you to mind that and let the developer be slow, but not the city.
All right, thank you. Jim Jolly, Ramya, and then Ken Schroder.
I see that Lacy has provided two options. They prefer the first, which most people have been talking about. I'm concerned about First Street. It's a narrow street, and I'm concerned about the building heights. The city council and the planning commission has gone through three or four years of intense study, a lot of public negative reaction to First Street, and I'm sorry, but tall is tall. I don't care if you set it back, it just doesn't matter to me. It's tall. And I think we should stick with our 30, 35-foot height limits downtown on that First Street. Not, it may not still look like a canyon, and they may give us a lot of setbacks, but tall is tall. You can't hide it. And I think we should stick with our guns, because you make an exception and it's just going to continue rolling through. So I think also, they can live with a two-story building, and we should stand by our guns and get what we can with parking in a public space. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Ramya, Ken Schroder, and then Sheri Carroll.
Hi, I'm Ramya Krishna, and I'm a Los Altos resident and a local teen. I also was a member of the Third Street Green Steering Committee last summer. And I just wanted to say that I think First Street Green will be very beneficial for teens. Many teens nowadays, as was mentioned earlier, often go to cities like Mountain View or Palo Alto to get, you know, a more lively experience. And I believe First Street Green will bring a much more vibrant experience to Los Altos. Teens would have a place to hang out, a place to call their own. You know, if we had things like free Wi-Fi, teens could sit there, eat food, talk with their friends, and they wouldn't have to go to places like Mountain View or Palo Alto. They could stay right here in their own communities. So that's why I think it's beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you, Ramya. Ken, followed by Sheri Carroll, and then Jessica Spicer.
Good evening. I'm not going to try to reiterate everything positive everybody said. I'm very much in favor of the project. I think it's been designed very intelligently and with a tremendous sensitivity to the city, in a partnership with the city, which I think is a great model and actually unique. My big fear is if this doesn't go forward, we might be forced economically or legally to accept plans that are nowhere near as generous, nowhere near as sensitive to this city, because I do believe in private property, and these people do have a right to develop it. So if we get this kind of sensitivity to our needs and benefits for the city, and they get benefits, it's a win-win. So I'm very much in support of it.
Thank you, Ken. Sheri, Jessica, and then Shalee Surkay. Thank you, Ken. Sheri, Jessica, and then Shalee Surke.
Hi. My name is Sheri Carroll, and I'm a resident of 100 First Street. So this particular development will impact me tremendously. I have to say that I believe this is a tipping point for Los Altos. I've been a resident for 66 years. You can do the math. And I've been trying to move back to Los Altos ever since I graduated from high school. I was so excited when I got on First Street and was able to purchase there. I will make a small sacrifice for traffic to support a philanthropic developer that is going to infuse feet on the street and the vibrancy back to our community. I truly am so excited about this meeting because I see the enthusiastic support. I didn't know that was going to be the consensus of this particular meeting. And I thought, oh, my goodness, if they don't understand that we have a philanthropic developer with class and quality and a heart of gold, and our city doesn't, isn't aware of this, I really thought I was going to have to be broken-hearted and put my house up for sale. It was that big of a decision for me because I'm a visionary. And when you have 10 vacant buildings, I mean, you have almost 30 vacant buildings in Los Altos, it gets a little scary. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri. Jessica, followed by Shalee, and then, oh, I have two Ramya Krishnas. There's not two of you, right? So it'll be Kathleen Dillon then after Shalee. Jessica.
All right. My name is Jessica Spicer. I've been living in Los Altos for about 10 years now with my husband, and I have three children ages 11, 10, and 7. And I'm here in support of First Street Green. Over nearly 10 years that I've lived in Los Altos, I have watched our downtown head towards extinction with some retail and restaurant businesses trying to revive it to no avail. No matter how great the business, foot traffic or lack thereof in downtown Los Altos, has not been able to keep it afloat. We have, as the last speaker said, around 30 open storefronts. I think it's more in the 20 to 30 range. Anyway, in order for our downtown to survive, we need more office space with large enough spaces to at least attract medium-sized corporations. With these corporations in place, foot traffic will increase. With the employees creating demand for restaurants and retail, our downtown will be brought to life and become desirable again. As downtown stands now, people like my husband, a serial and successful entrepreneur, will not be evaluating Los Altos for office space because it is not desirable to his employees. However, the
All right. And ditto to everything else.
All right. Thank you. Jessica, Shalee, followed by Kathleen. And then the last speaker card I have, so your chance to speak is ending if you still want to, will be David Rock.
Thank you. My name is Shalee Surke, and I love living in my home on 644 J Street. I strongly believe that the naysayers are confusing a city's evolution with the city's change. Los Altos can evolve without changing its basic character and charm. We chose to buy our home in Los Altos specifically because of its friendly village-like feel. Lacy's proposed First Street Green building will not fundamentally alter the character of Los Altos. Lacy has been an indispensable community partner in maintaining the vitality that downtown Los Altos does have through its support of many much-loved businesses that operate with subsidies like Bumble Restaurant. We have a unique opportunity to use this public-private partnership to create a win-win for everyone, to build community, to increase vibrancy, and most of all, increase the community feel of Los Altos, which is how our city can evolve without changing. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen Dillon, and then David Rock will
Kathleen Dillon. I'm on Montclair Way in Los Altos, and I'm going to give my minute to David Rock.
Does that mean David gets two minutes?
Unfortunately, I don't think she can do that.
Oh, no.
Is that correct? Sorry.
Talk fast. Yeah.
Kathleen?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
One minute.
Good evening. David Rock, 150 University Avenue. As Roberta, I'd like to focus on the building. And I like to focus on it because it emphasizes the strength of village charm. Because it's going to be stacked three stories as opposed to two, the setbacks will be up to 27 feet. There are at least 10 feet everywhere, 20 to 27 feet in most places. It reduces the canyon effect. I couldn't disagree more with Jim Jolly. Height is not just height. This is finally an example of form versus mass. We have, most of the public doesn't know Safeway had zero setback. 400 Main Street had two- to five-foot setback. Most people think 400 Main Street is a 45-foot-tall building, and they think that the Randy Lamb condos are a 30-foot building. It's exactly the opposite. One was beautifully articulated. It is form, and it's not mass. There couldn't be anything better for First Street than to build this building. I haven't even mentioned the incredible gift it is to the city of the 7,400-square-foot conference meeting, the meeting room, the conference room. The park is just sort of a nice little throw-in. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, David. Kathleen, did you want your minute back, or are you done?
I think you're done.
Okay. All right. So with that, I'm going to thank everybody and close public comment. And again, thank you all for coming out. So now we're going to open commission discussion and feedback to applicant. Who would like to go first?
I don't mind.
All right, Mike, go ahead.
Well, I have a couple of questions for staff to start out with. And I just want to reiterate some information that was given to us prior to this meeting, and that, Zach, you'd said that there are 422,000 square feet of office in the downtown triangle, of which 96% of it has been, is already rented. So that's, like, this project being an office building would, I don't know how much more square foot would be added. I guess that was my first question. And the second part of that question is, how much parking is required for that office?
So this project is providing, I believe, well, this total is 77,000, and then obviously there's portions that are for the community meeting space and the retail. And the project is parked per code, which is one space per 300 square feet. So for the office portion, the, let's see, it's 74,000 is the total number of office square footage. And I believe for the parking, it's a total of 361 spaces.
And then, well, I also heard about the Safeway agreement. Is that something that you guys are looking at and making sure that we're not violating that if this goes forward?
Yeah, we are definitely aware of it, and we'll need to work with, review that agreement, and if necessary with Safeway, to ensure that there's no violations of that agreement or where you're able to come to terms with an appropriate agreement to ensure that that isn't compromised.
Okay. And then the last question I had for you, there was two more. The traffic study, will there be a study when the plan is submitted to us for approval, yea or nay?
Definitely, there'll be a traffic and circulation study. And in addition, we'll, city staff and particularly Public Works in Traffic will work closely with the applicant to look at the circulation and driveway locations and all elements associated with traffic.
My concern is First, or Edith and San Antonio and the light, because that's county-controlled. And I don't know if the signal at First and Edith is in sync with those two, and if we add more cars that are coming through that alleyway or that roadway, how that, those intersections would be impacted. Just, that's
Yeah, we'll definitely make sure.
Okay. And then my last question, have, I heard about city parking in the second half of the park, or Plaza 7. Has anybody talked about that? Or I don't know what the process would be. Do you guys have a conversation and say, yea or nay?
There were some additional, initial discussions about the city retaining a consultant to look at that second half. However, that's been put on hold at this point pending the outcome of the downtown visioning. So at this point, we would just be maintaining the existing surface parking and alter it as necessary to maintain proper circulation.
So if later we decided to dig it out, the second half, that could happen. But, and tying to the other structure may not happen because of the way it's constructed?
That's tough to say at this point. I mean, obviously, that could change if staff receives different direction from council. But at this point, we're not pursuing any feasibility evaluations for anything other than maintaining the surface parking on that.
Okay. Then my comments for the applicant. One thing, so thank you for what you've given us. And I also have to make a statement that I did meet with the applicant prior to the meeting. So just, some of this I already shared with them, but I wanted to reiterate it so that it was in a public forum. One is that I'd like to see some visual, you know, what the, I don't know what to say, the building would look like if you were at State and First Street and looking towards First one way, because I'm concerned about the Safeway structure because it doesn't have a setback. Your structure does, and I'm not sure how that'll tie together. The other one is to go the other way, about halfway up Shasta and Edith somewhere, and looking the other way back. Because I think the setbacks that you're asking or that you're planning are going to be great, but I'm not sure how that, how those two elements would look. Also, and a note that I had of is, it'd be nice to see what the building looks like if you visually were across the street. What I can't decide is how much of the articulation, what it looks like. It almost looks, almost too white to me for the whole, for that whole length. I know that's a big chunk of land, but I don't know quite how that building will look. As we said in our downtown plan, normally buildings are broken up and have different colors. I think one of the things that we made sure that the 400 Main Street building, it had different elements to it so that it looked like it wasn't one massive building. And I have a concern with that. In addition, I really like the way that you guys have really thought about this and everything you've done. I, my, the things that I'm hoping we'll see more of is the vegetation plan for the site, what that's going to look like. I know in the pictures in the packet, you've given us kind of ideas, but I'd like to know where things are. And the walkway structure, I thought it was great. You put a terrace at the end part, and the way that it articulates back along the line, I think that's awesome. But just don't know quite, I mean, I looked at that video, and it looks great. But we've seen a lot of people do a lot of fancy things technology-wise, and then when it gets built, we go, wait a minute, what happened? So those are my comments that I saw.
I'll jump in.
Okay. So first, I want to, I'm so grateful for the public for weighing in. It has been, I can't remember the last time we had a project that had so many people that showed up and also wrote. And I'd encourage you to keep doing that. This is a study session. It's going to come before us again when it's all fleshed out for a vote, and you should weigh in again then. And then we make a recommendation. It's going to come before city council and weigh in again because at every stage, we need to hear from you. And letters are also great if you can't make it to these. And we read, I know I read, and I'm sure my fellow commissioners read every single letter, even the ones that were coming out in the last few hours before this meeting. And it was awesome. I mean, I was, it was great to read both for and against, and it was overwhelmingly in favor. I mean, I counted 53, 4, and 9 against, and then today speaking, 26, 24. And I think that there's often a perception, we talk about it at our meetings, that this town is divided between the folks who, you know, believe that we can be more vibrant. And what it takes to be more vibrant is greater density and possibly more height and more office space and even residential. And I don't think we're as divided. I don't think we're as evenly divided. I think that we hear often from a vocal minority, and it's so great that so many people came out, the silent majority, to speak on it. And I would encourage you, after this, to go to the farmer's market because the downtown visioning is having this pop-up space where all of you can say what you want for the downtown if you haven't already. And it would be amazing to have all this feedback there. So that's awesome. And then in terms of Lacy, I really do think that they have been a role model for how you get a project and do outreach. The outreach is so extensive. And if I think back on the last study sessions that we did and the things that were requested, they really addressed or incorporated every single item, including acquiring that last parcel, which makes the primary entrance on Shasta and totally changes a lot of what will probably be discussed in the traffic study in terms of the effect. The generous setbacks both on First Street and along the alley to help those residents in the back, which we mentioned we didn't want to forget. Providing a third story that has a reduced footprint to reduce the bulk and mass. And also, we said, you know, provide appropriate public benefits, and we didn't tell you what to do. And then we had a whole discussion about what do we think are good public benefits? And even though we thought we should put them, you know, give guidance, the decision by the city was not to. So you came up with some great ones, with no help from us. So good job. So the first, dividing my comments into two. The first is like sort of the existential question of whether option A or option B. I am of the opinion, and I always have been, that three stories is entirely appropriate. The code was changed with the intent recently to put a moratorium until the downtown visioning could be completed. I don't believe the intent was to eliminate three-story construction in our downtown. That would be like an economic mistake. So I am of the, but I recognize that that is the code. So then you need to get a variance. You need to provide a public benefit to accommodate that, an exception, right? So, but even before that, I would say that because of the setbacks and the way that that third-story footprint is so far pulled back, you can either have 77,000 square feet in a two-story building, or you can have 77,000 square feet in a three-story building. They're not talking about putting, you know, 20% more in a three-story envelope. So the envelope is so much improved from an architectural perspective in my mind with articulation. And the alternative of just putting that 77,000 square feet in a two-story, you know, like more brick-like mass is exactly what would ultimately upset, I think, the public. So despite that, you need an exception at this stage, the way the code is written. So what are the public benefits? And do they warrant, in my mind, this, warrant giving this third story? So the public plaza of having, you know, Lacy gift to us 7,400 square feet is phenomenal. And I don't think that we attribute enough to what that actually translates monetarily. I mean, if we were to ask, what is the value of a square foot in our downtown and assigned a value to it, and I asked Lacy to do that, and they, I think, lowballed the number. It was in the 400 to 500 range. You're talking about just that is a gift of over $3 million. And that is a lowball number, just giving us that easement. So then, you know, creating this space of something for everyone with, you know, ability to have concerts and movie nights and farmer's markets and quiet meditative and contemplative spaces and active spaces for children, that is an incredible gift for a whole variety of ages and I think is incredible. I also like that they wanted to support programming, and I think that that should be explored further. And I know when we talked about the green for the summer, initially staff wanted to, or staff suggested that the city invest 125,000. And then ultimately, I think we concluded, or council approved, like 25,000 with a match by Lacy of 25,000. I'm not sure if I'm getting the numbers right. But I think we should consider going forward that there be some joined programming. So like whatever the city says they'll put in for programming of that park, would Lacy consider matching it? So that there, it's not, you know, the private paying for the public benefit, but really a partnership so that there's kind of buy-in. You're not asking one to pay for it, but really treat them like a partnership with both parties buying in and making an investment in the space. The more, the additional parking is huge. We talk about how we need parking, and they were suggesting 40 additional spots. And when I worked on the Parking Commission, when we talked about a parking and loop program, we assigned a value of about $20,000 a spot. So right there, that's almost, you know, close to $1 million of another, you know, gift that they're giving us. And if you think about how much it's actually going to cost them to do underground parking, it's two to three times that cost. So if the city were to try to do underground parking, it could cost us 30, 40, 50,000. And when you go two stories down, they're really talking about an exorbitant number. So what, again, like we have to really attribute values. I think that this is not a $10 million gift. This is, far exceeds a $10 million gift to the city when you add up these components. And I did read in the notes that they're contemplating doing another 39. So that that is a possibility that they would be willing to do. And again, that there's, since they are offering it and they put it in their thing, we should accept that. Thank you. And, you know, I also think that it's going to be overparked because our ratios are three to one. But when we talked about it in the Parking Commission, in a public, shared space, it's really more appropriate to do two and a half to one. And the idea is that when someone parks in an office, and they also go to the cafe, and they go to pick up something at Safeway, and then they, you know, go to a restaurant for lunch, all of four of those places don't need to park that car. Only one of them does. So when you have these common communal spaces, you don't need as much parking as you do when when you are going to independent spaces. So, I think we're actually talking about a lot more parking. The public restroom, I mean, in a park, as someone who has young children, kills me when I go to a park and they don't have a public restroom. It's like, you need it in the first five minutes with children. So, that's awesome. In terms of adding vibrancy, I think their estimate of 1.2 million in possible retail sales is, is probably right. You know, the more, there was a study in the Loyola Corners Economic Analysis or Reference that said when you put indoor play space near retail, that retail succeeds more. So, it, you know, the more people you bring to a space, the more the retail and the restaurants around it thrive. So, I do think it will improve vibrancy in like a monetary way for the businesses around it. I think it'll also preserve charm. There's nothing charming about 21 vacancies that we have downtown right now and we're in a, and it was as high as, I think, 27. And we're in a boom, like this is as good as it gets. And if we have so many, that means that we need to be doing something different. I love the communal meeting space. That is also, like, there should be a value assigned to that. What does it cost to rent space? And they're giving it to us, to the community as, as, you know, as needed, just by signing up, by reservation. I also think that the maintenance, there's a value, there's a monetary value to the maintenance of publicly available space. Like the fact that the city isn't going to have to maintain some of that space is a huge savings for the city. So, yeah, they, these are great public benefits. There's no question that option A should, should go through and is the far superior option, no question in my mind. So then, we're also supposed to talk about design.
I would hope.
Yeah. So, so let's talk about specific design stuffs. You know, one of the concerns I have is about, and I think that it should be done, is evaluating sun exposure because where you have the, I don't, I just don't know how the sun falls into that space, but if we have the kind of days that we just had over this last week with 90-degree, you know, temperature, maybe there needs to be those sails that sort of shade some of the areas so that there's relief from some intense sun. So, I would do a sun exposure over that space and see what areas are just going to be, people are going to fry in for the, you know, many months that we have intense sun. I would also explore like an interactive garden farm area. I mean, we're really still throwing out ideas and I hope, I hope we are. That was a concept that I really liked in the Loyola Corners where it was, you know, putting some raised planting beds that's maintained in a partnership both with business groups and community groups, like the Garden Club of Los Altos and they could do a teaching garden and, you know, make this like, put a stamp on Los Altos as being this really green-friendly space and you could teach horticulture and, you know, to children and to adults and I think, I think all ages would, would like that. It'd be very family-friendly, environmental. I would do more for bikers. I mean, we have like a reputation, we have kind of a characteristic as a bike-friendly town and this was another concept, I thought, that the Loyola Corners had it, which was, I liked. Incorporating a little bit of the bike art in terms of the locks in that space. I saw you had, you know, we were putting these really creative public art bike areas, incorporating that. And then maybe in the café, this was a concept they discussed where you have a station where people can fill up their tires and, you know, do whatever they need to do so that it also encourages a little few, I mean, fewer cars and more people getting there on the weekends to use it as a, like a bike stop. The design of these outdoor lights, I thought the examples given in this were amazing. I'd love to see some of that. You know, I think people really enjoy the lights that we see in the trees during the holiday season and some of the images that you put into this plan of possibilities, both lighting the ground, making it almost feel like stars coming from, so at night, because our downtown is so dead at night that, not that people are going to hang out in the park, but if it's this lovely, quiet, contemplative, meditative space and is really well-lit both from below and from above, it could be really special all hours of the day. So, I would encourage you to do that. I love a lot, a lot of the outdoor seating concepts and I think it's important to make like spaces for all ages so the kids have their seating and the bikers have their space and the seniors and, and I would encourage you to really explore some of those ideas. I liked, I thought maybe there could be charging stations along where there are, where you are keeping the parking spots right up against. And it kind of, it creates this idea that this is really a green space if we have, and maybe that's an investment that the city needs to make, is making, you know, sort of the charging stations on those spaces across from the retail, just to send the message that that's what we want here. The climbing play area, I think it could be more generous. I mean, I saw a lot of nice green space. I didn't get, I couldn't get a real sense for how much there was, but I would, I would think that this is going to attract a lot of people. So, to avoid a situation where you have a ton of kids on, you know, a small amount of stuff, I would be generous with that, with that, that play area. I love the idea of helix art. I really enjoyed it when they were here. The outdoor art, I mean, the examples that you gave are like iconic designs that you see in, that are places, that are destinations. I mean, they, they aren't just things that a community enjoys, but there are things that people travel to, to see. And I think it's really exciting that you're contemplating and I would encourage you to keep going down that road of trying to do something that actually puts Los Altos like on the map. People want to come and see this space because of this amazing dynamic art that you put. Landscape materials, you know, I would consider a water play area. I don't know if that would take up too much space. I said the bike area. And then, so those are some of the, the design comments that I'd make. I think this is a game changer. You know, I think the, you know, a criticism that I've heard that like the idea that a third story is somehow a windfall to Lacy is just like a false falsehood because it's 77,000 square feet in whichever format and you collect the same amount of rent on that, whether it's two stories or three stories. And yet, it actually costs a lot more to build a three-story and to go three stories down and all these other public benefits they're proposing. It's, it's a far more expensive proposition to do it as three stories. So, it's, in my mind, a game changer and would be really something beneficial for the city.
Do you have any ex parte disclosure?
Yeah, I did also speak. Yeah. I think that Lacy reached out to all of us and I also met with them earlier this week to discuss this.
Why don't we just go down the row now so we don't each have to remember? I also met.
I did as well.
Anita? No. Okay. So, alrighty.
Is it my turn?
If you are willing, yes.
Keep it brief.
Yes.
I agree wholeheartedly with everything that my fellow commissioners have said so far, so I won't repeat much of that. I will just say that, you know, I try to bring in the viewpoint of an architect to this, that's, I think, why I'm here. And for that, I have to say option B is definitely a no in my mind because it is just a box with very little articulation, very little public, you know, engagement. And so, I hope that we all agree on option A. It is very early, it's a conceptual design, so I understand that there's a lot more that needs to be developed, but even at this very early stage, I think it's of a caliber and quality that, you know, is very top-quality. And in terms of materials, in terms of design, it already looks that way to me. And knowing that it will be much like the HP building or, or done by the same architects, that, that's really helpful to know because I think that's a real, one of the best buildings in all of downtown. Overall, I have to say, I really like the use of glass on the very top because there's so much concern about the third level. I think the glass will reflect off the sun and I think it will be, almost look transparent, you know, as much as a building can be. So, I do like that. I do like the glass on the bottom level where you can see through and see what's going on, on the interior. I think that's a really helpful way to lighten up the building. I do like the deep overhangs and the canopies. I do agree with Anita that it'd be nice to have more canopies for the public plaza. I like the depth in some of the windows I see. I know it's still very conceptual, but I do like the variety in the window sizes and depths and things like that. I guess another, architecturally, that's what, that's how, you know, all I, I can tell from now, from looking at it at this point, and I, I'm looking forward to seeing more, I do worry a little bit about traffic issues on Shasta. I think that the neighbors have, might have a valid concern and I like to see the traffic studies. Someone brought up deliveries. I wasn't sure if I saw that. And I don't quite understand the ride share, how that all works out, that drop-off zone, but I, I'm sure we'll get to revisit all that when the project is brought in. The second-floor balcony is facing the neighbors in the back. I do want to make sure that the neighbors are protected and that we have adequate screening from those balconies and if, if there's a problem with that, I imagine we could eliminate those or reduce them if needed. I do, I think it'd be nice to see some views from across the street because when we were looking at the 3D model, we were, it was as if we were walking alongside the building, but if we were across the street next to Safeway, we could probably see more of the third level. And I think it will, I don't think it's going to be a negative, but I think it's nice to see it in, you know, from across the street as well. And, you know, the solar study is a good, great suggestion. It'd be nice to see how the sun moves around the building at different times of the day and the year. And then, at the end, I guess I'm just going to add that I really appreciate the transparency in the process. Like one of the public speakers said, it really is helpful that they're very transparent in the way they're presenting this. So, I do appreciate all that. Let you take over.
Hi. So, I took a more logical approach to this, guys. No emotion here. 30-foot is the code. I disagree with it. This pretty much designed, this whole committee before Anita was on disagreed with it, but it is the code. And that means that if one is going to exceed that, there has to be an exceptional benefit, which we all agree, I think a priori, this presentation has created the option for exceptional benefits. I'm not going to go through it again. I agree. Great job. What I'd like to also point out is in the general approach towards variances, which this is not, there's another piece, which is do no harm. And so, my focus took the fact that there are basically three schemes and we've only seen two here. And I want to point this out, that A and B both have three stories. One is a more active articulated, more giving back, and the other is less so, A and B. But alternatively, they could put the same amount of square footage in two stories if they change the content, so it was not offices, if it was residential, for example, and they could do it in a two-story structure, that would be literally, as was described, a brick, a three-dimensional rectangle filling the entire site. And that was a choice they made not to do, but that's something they have the right to do. And we would have no ability to say, no, I'm sorry, you can't do that. We could put lipstick on the pig, but the bottom line is, it would be a volume that we would have to live with because it's code-aloud. So, between or among those three, for me, it is clear that the exceptional benefits in my mind do provide that value to having the additional third floor and getting that number of square footage. But, I have great concerns and it was brought up by Roberta and John Both and a couple of other speakers. Everybody in town has the same rights. And when we do residential review for multifamily or when I was doing it on the Architecture and Site Committee in the Dark Ages years ago, one of the main concerns about people in town is privacy. We live in a small town and we know each other and we don't want to look in each other's pockets. And I noted that the visuals on this were fascinating. I love this technology. God, it's great. But, I have great concern for the people in the lane, AKA alley in the back, who have some of the buildings, when you walk through, have substantial plantings of their own, but they were used to being 50 and 60 feet away from a building. Now granted, they were looking over, as was pointed out, the most unattractive garbage enclosures, blacktop, cars, trash, whatever, but nonetheless, they had a sense of air and space. And so, that's changing. A lot of those buildings have balconies and I have some concerns that a transparent rear in this building will provide some privacy impacts that need to be addressed by the designer. And if it means that the articulation, instead of being a sheer wall, is one that articulates in such a way that the views are not going across the 25 feet to the person in the balcony in the back, I think it's really important. I am very concerned about the people who bought those properties, knowing that granted something was going to change, but I don't think anybody in their wildest dreams expected something as amazing as this, but nonetheless, it's going to be right in their faces. And I have great concerns for that. And in terms of mitigating with landscape, you know, that part of the lot that belongs to this project proposal is north. It's in the shadow of its own building. And I don't know what kind of experiential growth you can get when you're not getting sunshine at all. Maybe you'll get some from the west, but in fact, it's not going to get a lot, a lot of light. And there is good plant on the other side, so I think there could be some acknowledgement that there's going to need to be some carving out in order to do something that is not landscape-dependent. And as Bhaji pointed out, maybe the terraces on this building, instead of having an opening facing the neighbors, could be screened in such a way that you would have the experience of an outdoor space on their building without imposing on the privacy of the people behind them. Because this is really almost like neighbors. Now, at night, that may not be a problem unless you have people who work at night, but one assumes that there's a normal workday and at a certain point, it will calm down. But if you have people going through an important project and they're there till 3:00 in the morning, it would be something to think about. It's sort of the concept of being a good neighbor in a big, big way. So, that's the do no harm aspect. Similarly, I'm also focusing on the building because the applicant asked for feedback on the building. And you heard all the good stuff. I don't know if we're magically sticking with a 50-foot module, but I do believe that the building has really good articulation in some parts and is very sheer, albeit glass, and it's a style choice and I understand that. So, what I'm saying is, on First Street, where there is a pedestrian module, perhaps that should be looked at in terms of creating some differentiation in the materials or the window pattern. It doesn't have to be little boxes, but it could be something that recognizes that there is an order in the organization of the openings that allows us to recognize that it's broken into pieces because that was one of the best things that came out of one of the other First Street developments is, was pointed out that this was a building the size of the Queen Mary and we needed to make sure that things moved so it didn't feel like the Queen Mary landing on First Street. So, those are specifics about that. I'm really intrigued by the concept of the big open green and then the wider space on the first floor close to the green and then it narrows and it moves and then it gets to the corner of Shasta and it stops. And there's no reason to keep going. And there's no reason to keep going. And I'm wondering if there's a carved-out section on the plan, if maybe there should be a point of arrival there, so that when you get there, there's also an opportunity to land. So that you're not saying, oh, I'm here, where am I going next? It'd be nice if there was a visual cue that said, here is an arrival spot. Doesn't have to be as big as the other end, but maybe something, an element, a sculpture, a water feature, whatever, something that provides that stopping point that makes sense. And then if other buildings further down get developed, fine, and if not, there's still an occasion, an architectural occasion there. I have to say, a side note, my kids will kill me. My kids are grownups now, but at the time, they had no place as teenagers to hang out. They were hanging out in the Safeway parking lot. And I would say to them, don't do anything stupid because I sit next to the police chief at the meetings, and he's going to know you're my kids. It'd be nice to have a public space. That's one of the reasons why I'm saying this is a no-brainer. In my mind, that kind of amenity of a gathering place of the town is so obviously a terrific thing to do. About parking and traffic, yep, First Street's a problem. There's no way around it. And we won't really have it quantified until we get the parking and traffic, I mean, the traffic study. But I have to say that I have a certain level of cynicism to the traffic studies. Sometimes they seem very counterintuitive to what I would think. But with that said, I think there's a subtlety here that King Lear brought up, which is, if the parking committee thought about a garage, and they did very seriously, and we do have money in the in-lu program, in the city coffers, but it's not enough to build a garage. But there might be a subtle math to be worked on in the development, not necessarily now, of maybe not putting the third level underground, but putting the in-lu fees towards a garage, if we can get a garage faster, on one of the other parking plazas, and pull significant parking and traffic off this end where it's very constricted, down to the San Antonio side. It seems to me that this is a sophisticated thing, that it's not going to be an A equals A-plus. It's going to be nuanced in some way, but it would be something that I think would be useful to discuss as part of the traffic study with staff and then bringing up as a concept for city council to mull over. Because one of the things that was brought up here many times in many different ways is this is an opportunity. And we really should take advantage of the opportunity for all the benefits we talked about. But the bigger opportunity is for city council to be proactive, to step forward instead of being reactive and say, okay, what's the bigger picture for the town? If we can, by the beneficence of this project, get an in-lu fee in lieu of the third level of parking, which may not be attractive to anyone, but might be used by people who work in town, all the white dot parking, you put your car in at the beginning of the day, you get it at the end of the day, it's not covered with bird poop and it's not hot from the sun, great. But the bottom line is, if that money could be used alternatively to get a garage to take pressure off this, that might be a better bargain and take a far-sided view for city council to say, okay, where do we want the town to be in five years or 10 years, and what serves us best? And so that was very intriguing to me and I hope can be investigated further. As for deliveries and trucks, I think that was one of the good choices that Lacy made in looking at this as an office situation. Because you're going to get small FedEx trucks, you're not going to get the Safeway delivery trucks. And so the turning radius are small, and if they need to send an even smaller truck, that's great, they'll learn. But it is a problem because we just don't have the breathing space on that street, and I appreciate that. As for using the park at night, why not? If the park was lit up by the same kind of lights we have on our trees during the Christmas season, and you went there and it was pleasant to be in, and you had the sound of a water feature, I could see this could be a place where maybe not 3:00 in the morning, but people always said to me, the town rolls up, but about 9:00 o'clock at night, they roll up the streets. Here's an opportunity to not do that. And I think that would be wonderful. So...
All right, that must be a Friday or Saturday.
That's okay. I guess the other thing that I found about traffic was, I was very pleased to see that last parcel to allow the entrance on Shasta because I thought that made a tremendous difference. Of course, the person who's renting it there is someone who I do business with, so he's going to have to move. I'm a little annoyed at that, but that's not my problem. The thing that I want to point out about being proactive and far-seeking, far-seeing for council is that I don't want this to feel like a popularity contest. And that's one of the reasons that I think Sally pointed out, that it's nice to cheer, but we want everybody to be able to say their opinion without feeling like they're going to be demeaned for having, moving from the mainstream. The bottom line is, if this is indeed a tremendous benefit, then for heaven's sakes, as Renita said, come to all the meetings and say so. Because it is, on a certain level, important for city council to hear citizens. And it should be enough people coming out that they realize that it is a groundswell and not just a few people who are gadflies. But with that said, it is an opportunity for a greater vision for the town in that this is one part, but it could be part of taking pressure off traffic, it could be part of bringing the library to the downtown on the other side of San Antonio. I'm hoping that city council will rise to the occasion here and make it a bigger view of what's going on. I'm done.
Point to process. For those of you who are eagerly awaiting the start of the regular PTC meeting, we're going to wrap up this discussion and then move into that, so we'll probably be about half an hour late. If you all exit, don't worry, I won't record your names and we won't be offended. But, okay, so Alex.
I'll do my best to make it less than half an hour.
I didn't say it was all your half hour.
I really despise going after you because you're always so well-spoken. So, and I agree with a lot of what you said. I mean, I think for me, this is a no-brainer. And I think one of the things that we're not talking, or I haven't heard mentioned yet, is, you know, again, kind of going up to the third story, I think we've all established is not a windfall because it's the same amount of square footage. But I do think it's also, even if you looked at, they're not, I don't think they're building to the full potential even with what they're proposing at 77,000 square feet. Right? Because there, I don't know if you add up all of the parcels. I think they're over 45,000, 40, do you know what it is?
1,700 square feet is the total size of their site.
So two stories, I mean, you're close... So, two stories, you know, assuming you can get the parking, you're close to 100,000. And they are at 77, so, I mean, it's a discount to the total potential. And they could go all the way to, you know, these two-foot setbacks, and we'd have this brick that everyone's talked about. So I also, you know, I think what someone, I forget his name, but I think really struck a chord with me because you can't only look at it from, you know, you went through a very, Renita, you went through a very detailed exercise of trying to put some kind of, you know, monetary, and put it in perspective from a monetary standpoint. But I don't think we, I mean, to me, not looking at it from a monetary standpoint, but having this gathering place where people can build community downtown and people of all ages can enjoy it is, is something that just money can't buy. Because I think there's a lot of people that, I don't want it to be viewed as you can pay $10 million and you could do whatever you want. Because I don't think that's what they're doing and, you know, there's a lot of people that could, you know, in this town, that could pay $10 million. And the idea is not that you could then do whatever you want. I think that they really have listened to a lot of the input from, not only from us, but from the community, and adapted their plans. And I think we're getting, it's a great gift. So if I had to, so I just kind of wrote some notes. And so quickly going through them, I think the public bathrooms are a great benefit. I'd like to see them slightly larger. I think like 68 square feet, each one is probably like one fixture.
One accessible bathroom.
Yeah. So if it's really going to serve a purpose for that park, I'd like to see it larger. Personally, I'd rather not have the 1,700 square feet of meeting space and give that to the park and just have the park be larger. I think those, you know, meetings can and should be held elsewhere. And I think you guys also left the existing parking closest to State Street, which was a response to, I think, some of the retailers that were along State Street. So I think you're being responsive. I personally, given how much additional, you know, parking you're providing, I would love to actually see the park extend into, into that, taking over those parking spaces as well. I'd go as far as saying that. Renita brought something up, which I was actually also thinking about. And that is, I think some people have said, you know, why do we need another park? And how do we make this differ? And I think some of the ways that you guys are looking at activating and the stage and all of that, I've seen in other cities, I think, which would make the park different, some kind of water feature, play feature for kids. And I could really see that on, on the warm days where Renita's going to be looking for shade. She'd be sitting in the shade while our kids are playing in some kind of water feature. So I think that would make it something that would be set apart from everything that we already have and all the, all the parks that we already have. I was a proponent of, my big fear, which we've talked about, is having the entrance on first and having cars stop on first and drop people off. And I express that, and I appreciate you guys looking at that and having the drop-off on Shasta. But I think it needs to be taken a step further. Because, you know, it's either creating some kind of entry there, some kind of feature, because I think it's unlikely for people to walk, get dropped off on Shasta, walk halfway down, and then get into the building. Or make it so hard and that you, you know, you can't stop on first and drop people off. So some kind of stone wall or some plantings or something to really prevent that from, from And I think that there's, just in terms of some of the neighbors and talking about, you know, I think the expectation of privacy in a more urban environment is slightly different. And you often have balconies that are right next to each other. And so, you know, I think if this building came first, you know, it just, I think everyone has a right to develop their building. I wholeheartedly agree with you that we need to be as sensitive as we can to that and protect it as much as we can, but I wouldn't want that to be the reason why this building doesn't get built.
Neither would I.
And just knowing how quickly the city moves, I wouldn't want to tie this for the city to figure out the in-lu fees. Because I would want this to get built as quickly as possible. And, you know, if we can simplify that and you guys, I mean, I think it'd be great if they did, but I, you know, my fear is that we'd then be talking about a building for my grandkids.
Okay. Well, I hope not.
Thank you.
I'm going only to basically repeat those specific things that are really significant to me, with which I agree with my other colleagues, and then add a few. This is a chance for us to develop a huge parcel and I think to be a unifying project for the city, which we desperately need. We've had a lot of discord about what's going on on First Street. We've taken a lot of lessons from it, I said, on the Downtown Buildings Committee, where we really talked with a lot of residents about what you didn't like about what had happened on First Street. And we need to incorporate a lot of that into what we do here. We have a project that's going to take up basically as much linear feet when you're walking down First Street as the condos at 100 First, as the Safeway, as a good chunk of what's at 400 Main. This is a huge, long, long parcel. And we have to get it right. I'm not prepared tonight to say which option I prefer because I think we need to be sure we get the data to make a good decision. And I don't think we yet have that data. So I'm going to address my first comments to staff because I think they've got a big job ahead of them in making sure that they get the information for council, who are ultimately the decision-makers. We're just the recommenders here. And that is, let's get the numbers, where we all agree what the numbers are and where they came from. There's numbers floating around here tonight about what's the benefits and what would be the costs and how much more vibrancy and money do we get from this and so on. Let's get the staff to really put together a good set of numbers with good references as to where those came from so that we have a unified set of information that the community can rely on, not just council, but that we can rely on, the community can rely on, and we're not arguing about, well, you know, is this really going to be a benefit or not? One of the problems we had with DBC when we asked the Economic Development Director, you know, what was the impact of putting Safeway back in there? What was the impact of putting 400 Main? The first thing we got back is, we can't tell. We, you know, we have some intuitive sense that we got more feet on the street and we got something, but it's not in the sales tax data. So how do we know what we're really getting? Let's figure that out. Let's also look at the traffic. I mean, there's been enough said here about traffic. There's enough nightmares about traffic. We really need to get that one done correctly, especially with, as Mr. McTeague and a couple of other people mentioned, the whole thing down at Edith, Edith and First and getting onto Foothill. That could be, we could create a horrible nightmare for which we would never be forgiven if we don't do that right. I actually like Phoebe's idea about the parking option, but I also am sensitive to what Alex said about with the timeframe. I'm not sure we can get the in-lu thing done in time, but I think it's a creative thing to look at. I think we should look at what would be the cost of the city doing a plaza ourselves. So that we have some agreed idea of, you know, what benefit are we doing, getting if we actually go forward with this. I'd also like to be sure that we get, and I'm going to transition now here between staff over to our ultimate applicant. And that is, let's get some drawings and views that are really, truly correct human perspective. One of the things we heard on the Downtown Buildings Committee over and over, and some of our other colleagues, and Mike, you said this, is we have all those beautiful presentations and when we get the building, it doesn't look like what the pictures were. And we heard that over and over. I'm a photographer, so I'm going to speak in photography terms. Go find a nice Nikon 800, which has a full sensor, full-frame sensor, get a 50-millimeter lens, and go to all those places that Mr. McTeague mentioned and that a couple of my other colleagues mentioned, and take pictures that are really true human eye pictures, and then put your building there. And let us see what that looks like. Because your, your beautiful 3D tour, which was truly lovely, nicely done, is still very wide-angle. It doesn't show what it looks like if you were a human walking down the street. And that's what our citizens want when we get a project that's this big, this significant, is we want to see it the way we're going to see it when we're on the street. To that extent, I'm going to go back to something that Phoebe said about the 50-foot modules. It is what's in our design guidelines. It was reinforced by what DBC said. And yet, you know, the Packard Building, as you all know, or I hope you know, when the, when the citizens of this town were surveyed a year, two years ago, the one building, the only building that got more than a plus-one on a scale of minus-two to plus-two, the only one that had been built in the last five or six years, was the Packard Building. People liked that building. People don't like Safeway. They don't like 400 Main. There's a lot, some people that do. But there's a lot of trust in what you're doing, what you're going to bring forward. You have a lot of cred because of that Packard Building. And I think you can do things with articulations, you can do things with materials. Obviously, this is a concept right now. We don't have finished materials. I, you know, I think we all realize that. And so there's a lot of potential there for trying to break this thing up in a way that it's going to fit more... that it's going to fit more, it's kind of intended to be kind of a transition to multifamily residential. All the rest of the office buildings around there have residential characteristics, and yet here we're looking at a building that's very modern. So, you know, that's kind of a tight rope to walk as to how do we fit into the things that are at, you know, down the street that look more residential, but are office buildings, with the buildings obviously more contemporary, and we are in 2017 after all. To the extent about being honest about what we're doing, I don't think you're intending to have rooftop landscaping. Is that right? You don't have rooftop landscaping on second floor?
We are intending to have.
Okay. Because it was kind of confusing to me when I looked at the plan view, the really nice plan view that was the landscape view. There was that light green that was obviously the top of the second story. So, it kind of took me a while to say, what's the real footprint here? Where's the footprint of the first couple floors? Where's the footprint of the second, of the third floor was very clear. But with that light green, it was like, okay, oh, that's the top of the second story. Is that going to have greenscape? You know, what is that? Can we be a little bit more clear about what that's like and where the boundaries are? And back to staff, I think we need a nice, simple view of what the easements are. What's the easements and what's the real setbacks? Let's help the community see this for what city and what's coming forward from our proposer. I also agree with a couple of my colleagues. We really need sun and shadow projections, and not just in terms of what happens in the park, but what happens on the residential pieces behind you. And I think we also have to be sensitive, as again, a number of my colleagues said, to what's going on back there. Those folks have had views of the hills, and those hills are going to go away. And sooner or later, those folks are going to wake up to that, and they're going to come out here and yell. So, we have to realize that that's a community that is very much impacted by this project. And we really have to pay attention to what kind of shadow projections we've got coming from that. And I know it's a problem, so we need to really look at it. And again, it's part of having the data for our community to be able to look at things all together and know we're looking at the same thing. I'm not sure, and I did go and stand in a number of places down there, I'm not sure that I agree with the assertion that basically that third story goes away and isn't visible. I think it's visible from First Street when you're across the street. I think it's visible anytime you're in any of the plaza area, that you really can see the third story. So, I think that we have to realize it really is going to be visible. Let's get those photorealistic pictures out there, so people can say, okay, that's the way it looks, and it's okay, or it's not okay. And then, as respect to the plaza itself, I agree with my colleague to my right. I'd like to see either water feature or more green in the plaza area, less pavement. I looked at the ratio. You have a place in your plans where you showed what the percentage or the square footage of green, lawn basically, and landscaping versus plaza. I'd like to see, or cement, more green, less cement. Or water. Water is the same as green. And I'd also agree, I'd rather have more open space than a meeting room. People can find other places to meet. They meet in peats, for God's sakes, quite often, it seems to me. And then, the last thing I'd say, and this is more to the community, is the way our code is set up right now, there's no guaranteed amount of square footage that anybody can build. We moved the code requirements in the city a number of years ago from where there was what's called a floor-area ratio, which says, this is how much square footage you can build on a property that's this size. And we did away with that. And we did away with that, and I remember getting a very, very nice, I'm going to call it a lecture, an explanation from Phoebe when I was on the Downtown Buildings Committee, that one of the benefits of moving away from that into form-based zoning, which is what we have, is the idea that you do start with a cube. You start with a maximum cube, and then you say, how do we fit to the design guidelines? How do we fit to the community character and the community expectations? How do we fit to the zoning requirements and so on? And you start carving off pieces of that cube to get down to what's okay. So, it's not a matter that our potential applicant can build, has some right to build 77,000 square feet. That's not true. And so, to that extent, a two-story building that's 77,000 square feet, a three-story building that's 77,000 square feet, and saying those are your choices, that's a false choice. That's not really what it is. If there was going to be a requirement that this come in as a two-story building, it'd still have to meet all the design requirements, and they might not be able to build 77,000 square feet by the time we and the City Council got done with them. So, I think we need to be a little careful about tossing around this presumed equivalency between a two-story and three-story 77,000 square feet. I don't want to end on that negative. Again, I want to say we're really early in this. I think there's a lot of great things, but let's get the data, the views, the images, the impacts right, so we're talking logically about our decision and not based on emotion. Thank you.
Okay. Bringing it in for the close. Let me see if I can do this as concisely as possible. So, one thing, I think there was some confusion between options A and B. Part of that was due to your plans, which actually, when it showed options A and B, still had the plaza in B in several of the views. And I mentioned this when we met. So, the really only difference between option A and B, as I understand it, is the building is the same, except the café may become something not publicly accessible, but it cuts off and the park plaza, you know, there's an easement, whether it's an easement or not, there's some open space, but the park is not there. And so, that's where, if you look on the page where it compares option A and B in the staff report, well, actually, I guess this is the part that Lacey, you provided, option A's and B's, option A is clearly compelling. Everyone's been talking about that. And let me put in a plug for how important community meeting space is. I do nothing but nonprofit unpaid labor, that's why I'm sitting here. And meeting space is so hard to come by to hold a professional board meeting or anything. You know, there's a few banks in town that are kind, but we really do need meeting space, so I'm going to call that a significant public benefit. Everything else you have listed there is a public benefit. I'll add a few others we talked about. The lead, whatever sort of level of certification you aim for, I would like to see that. I think you should go to Environmental Commission, link it to achieving some objectives in our climate action plan. So, it's not just, oh, it's nice, we're lead. It's, we're nice, we're lead, and you have achieved an X percent reduction in greenhouse gases, or, you know, whatever the parameters are. I won't try to make them up. So, tie it to something that the city has to achieve. That's a public benefit. I think that alley is a public benefit, or it could be. It certainly looks, it's going to look a lot nicer. Make it as much of a public benefit for those residents who will suffer in some respects because of the project. But what concerns me here is option A and B. B is, you know, no plaza. We don't really know, as far as we discussed, there's a time trigger. So, it's about, you know, when do we know that we're moving forward? Because we've separated, the park is not a public benefit. The park is a potential gift. And if we're approving a building and we're hoping for option A, public benefits, but at some point you say, oops, sorry, the window closed, we're at option B, I still think option B has some public benefits, but we're certainly not getting all the fine things that we're talking about. So, I would like to see, when you come back, some better definition of when the trigger closes. I'm mixing analogies here. When the window closes for option A, and we're stuck with, again, option B is nice, but, you know, we don't want to end up there inadvertently because it's timeline-related. So, that's how, so option C is the two-story. We didn't talk about that. It's, you know, so option A and B are the same building with some different uses, and no, B doesn't have the park. Okay. So, if I'm correct in that, nod? Yeah, okay. So, all right. So, then, moving on a few more points, let's see, some of this I've said already. I would like to see, I mean, your drawings show some beautiful materials. What I don't want to see is another 400 and Main Street, which is just, you know, a lot of cement stuck, or whatever it is, it's uninteresting. On the Packard Building, what I love, there's wood, there's stone, there's metal. I love that copper. Again, it doesn't need to look the same, but your marriage of natural materials in that building is part of what makes it so successful, and then tying in the landscape with that. I mean, when I did my landscaping project, I went to the Packard Building and took pictures of all the grasses. So, I will tell you that.
It was a much smaller landscape project.
Yes, my project was much smaller. That is true. But your wall, well, anyway, I won't go there. So, let's see, some other points. I think we've touched on it. We really want to protect the residents, both the 100 Main Street and then the Second Street residences, against, that alley is really a sweetener, I think, for those residents. But again, privacy concerns are paramount. I wanted, there were several letters, no speakers here, talked about about 100 First Street. The parking, the street parking that they have, it sounds like they don't get access to it. I don't know if the city can look at dedicating that as, you know, 100 First Street visitor parking.
Are you saying that the First Street, which is a public right-of-way, has to provide parking?
Well, no, I'm, let me finish. No, let me finish. So, the statement that several speakers at 100 First Street said is they, because apparently their project was underparked, or at least not every residence has two spaces, again, this is what happened if we don't sufficiently park, they don't have parking. And maybe we actually don't allow construction parking there, but you're right, it's public assets. But those people are going to be impacted with the parking in the street. Maybe, Lacey, who's been so welcoming of a lot of the ideas, maybe some of your public benefit parking is, the pot is sweetened for 100 First Street. I don't know, I'm just, I don't want to brainstorm up here, but I think we do need to help them at least keep the construction parking out of those spots in front of 100 First Street.
My concern is that it might be fully parked, because I imagine that staff looked at that when it was done. And what people are doing is not parking in their spaces underneath, because they'd rather park on the street.
Okay. Again, I'm just reacting to the letters we have. It's not facts, like Anita was talking about.
Two things they asked for. One was the convex mirror that they wanted, and the other was maybe remove the two parking spots on each end of the egress.
They could turn.
So, maybe the traffic study can study doing those two things.
Well, that definitely should. But I know some of the letters that I read talked about.
I mean, I had a question for staff I forgot to ask, which was, is the exitway for that project, I mean, this is independent of what we're talking about tonight, but just could somebody look at making sure that they have a line of sight and that there's an issue there? Because it sounds like there is, but it has nothing to do with this project. It has to do with the First Street 100 building.
Yeah. So, I think that there are, again, we'll look at traffic and potentially the parking and what can be done there. And I think my last comment is, again, when this application formally comes forward, I think we need some, a little bit, understand better the program maintenance arrangement, I think that was touched on. You know, if you guys are saying, oh, we'll do all the programs for X years, or we'd like this to be a public-private partnership for programming, we just need to see some data around that or some concepts. Maybe there are scenarios of that. But we need a little bit more definition around what that would look like. So, with that, I think I don't want to repeat what anyone else has said. So...
Can I ask a quick question of staff? So, when we do the final report, what would help me is to have a little spreadsheet that said Plaza 7, here's how many spots there are before anything happens. Here's what happens if we do option A. I know it's in the data, but it'd just be nice to have a little summary. How many spots will be removed from the surface? How many are going to be provided from the building? And then, how many white dots do we have in the city as far as overall? Because we've heard about putting white dots underneath, and I'm not sure that's going to free up a lot of space. I mean, I know logically it makes sense, but it'd be nice to see, back to what Anita said, was data, right? What are the numbers that we can all look at and go, oh, okay, that's what we're talking about?
Yeah. And I've got a data element, I don't know how you get at it, is, does having the park generate more traffic? And if it does, how are you going to assess that? But I think you have to, you have to address it somehow.
The other thing is, for Pilgrim Haven, we had a construction parking plan to make sure that the neighbors weren't affected massively by construction trucks. And they did a really good job on First Street. I know that the men were parking across at Lincoln Park, and that made it much more pleasant for the residents. So, I think that kind of thinking ahead in the construction, I don't know when it comes in the process, but I'd like staff to be, have that in the back of their mind, that that's something that would be...
A preliminary construction management plan will be part of their application.
Oh, good.
Okay. Hey, are there, you have more feedback?
Well, I was, because I have no problem with the managing construction, but the notion that those public parking spaces are reserved for that building is, that's not the case.
It's not public. It's okay. The word "public" means public, not private. So, I think we can put that one to bed pretty good.
Okay. I tried. All right. So, do you have sufficient input to wade through? Yes, I think so. Does anyone else have any closing remarks? Staff? Nothing? All right. I'm going to close this study session. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight.
And then, we're going to resume the meeting at 7:45?
We haven't, we can't resume it. We haven't started it. But we will, we will start the regular meeting at 7:45, yes.
Hey, John. Good seeing you.